Yeah, let's go ahead and let people in from the waiting room. Aloha, everyone. Thanks for joining us tonight. We're gonna give it a few more minutes to let other people join. We'll start about five thirty-three or so. If you've just joined, we'll give it another minute or so before we get started. Okay. Well, aloha and mahalo for joining. My name is David Sakota. I'm the Fisheries Program Manager for the State of Hawaii Department of Land and Natural Resources, Division of Aquatic Resources. I will be conducting tonight's public hearing along with the DAR staff at our in-person host sites. It is now five thirty-three PM and this public hearing is called to order. This is a formal public hearing on the proposed adoption of a new chapter, Hawaii Administrative Rules, H A R Chapter thirteen dash seventy-eight, entitled Ocean Stewardship User Fee. The primary purpose of this chapter is to establish rules implementing the ocean stewardship user fee that was established by the Hawaii State Legislature in two thousand and twenty-one through Act forty-six and codified in Section one eighty-seven A dash fifty-two Hawaii Revised Statutes. As required by law, the proposed rules have been drafted in Ramsera format, copies of which can be found in the announcement section of the DAR website. Those attending the meeting in person may ask DAR staff for a copy. This public hearing is being simultaneously livestreamed to the DAR YouTube channel for anyone wishing to observe the public hearing but not provide testimony. And for your convenience, the address to the DAR YouTube channel is at the top of this slide and a link to the livestream has also been pasted into the chat. The purpose of this hearing is to provide the public the opportunity to provide comments in the form of oral and written testimony on these proposed amendments. Approvals to conduct this public hearing were obtained from the Board of Land and Natural Resources at their board meeting on June ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. The legal notice of this public hearing was published in the June twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-three Saturday issues of the Garden Island and West Hawaii Today newspapers and in the June twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three Sunday issues of the Honolulu Star Advertiser and Hawaii Tribune Herald. Additionally, notice of this public hearing was posted on the Draft Rules and Public Notices page of the DAR website where digital copies of the draft rules in Ramsera format can be found, as well as posted on the announcements page of the DAR website. First, we will watch a short video explaining the proposed changes to the administrative rules. We will then begin the public testimony period, which will be conducted as follows. Everyone testifying via Zoom was required to pre-register in order to get the link to testify. We will keep registration open throughout the public hearing and will monitor our email in case anyone has trouble registering or joining the Zoom meeting to provide their testimony. However, if you are unable to join via Zoom, you may still provide oral testimony at one of the in-person hearing locations listed in this slide or you may submit written testimony by following the directions at the bottom of this slide. Everyone testifying in person at one of the host sites should have written their information down on the sign-in sheet provided at the host site. Those attending in person who have not registered but would like to provide testimony can alert the DAR public hearing officer at your in-person site at this time and your name will be added to the list. It is important that everyone who wishes to testify provide their name and contact information so we have an accurate record of everyone providing testimony. You will be called upon by a member of the DAR staff when it is your turn to testify. We ask that all individuals attending virtually keep their microphones muted when not speaking. We will take testimony in the following order. First, we will take in-person testimony from people who have signed up to testify, beginning in Hilo, then Kona. And once all in-person testimony is gathered, we will take Zoom testimony. Please keep your testimony brief and on the subject to allow everyone the opportunity to testify. Each person providing testimony will be given three minutes. Please be aware that if you go beyond three minutes, I will kindly ask you to conclude your testimony. We are recording this hearing to make a complete record and accurate record of the proceedings, so please state your full name before giving your testimony. Make sure to speak clearly so we accurately record your testimony for the record. Please turn off the live YouTube stream of this hearing while testifying, as it will cause an echo. Please remember to respect the opinions of all testifiers and that this hearing is not an opportunity for accusations or rebuttals. There may be differing opinions. Everyone will have an opportunity to voice their opinion for the department to consider. All testimony should be directed to me, not to the audience. Once again, please note that this hearing is simultaneously being streamed on YouTube. The livestream will be recorded and preserved on YouTube as a matter of public record. Please be aware that by offering your oral testimony today, you're consenting to being audio and video recorded if your camera is on. Let's begin with a short video on the background explaining the proposed administrative rules.
Hawaii Administrative Rules, Chapter thirteen dash seventy-eight, Ocean Stewardship User Fee, Background and Legal Authority. In two thousand and twenty-one, the Hawaii State Legislature introduced House Bill ten nineteen as part of D L N R's administrative bill package. In the bill, the legislature recognized the ecological, economic, and cultural value of Hawaii's ocean waters and marine resources to the state. It also noted that the increasing popularity of marine ecotourism requires greater measures to ensure the continued health of marine ecosystems and that D L N R may need a more consistent and reliable funding source to manage, protect, and restore marine resources throughout the state. To address this need, House Bill ten nineteen proposed to establish an Ocean Stewardship Special Fund and to authorize D L N R to adopt rules pursuant to the Chapter ninety-one rulemaking process to establish non-resident user fees for the use and enjoyment of the state's ocean resources. On June eighth, two thousand and twenty-one, then-Governor David E. Gates signed the measure into law as Act forty-six, which was later codified into the Hawaii Revised Statutes under H R S Section one eighty-seven A dash fifty-one, Ocean Stewardship Special Fund, and one eighty-seven A dash fifty-two, Ocean Stewardship User Fee. The new law requires all commercial use permit holders to collect an ocean stewardship user fee from each passenger carried or customer served beginning on January first, two thousand and twenty-four, provided that the fee shall be one dollar per passenger or customer deposited into the Ocean Stewardship Special Fund established pursuant to H R S Section one eighty-seven A dash fifty-one and requires the department to adopt rules to implement the new fee requirement. The department has received questions regarding how the monies collected will be used. H R S Section one eighty-seven A dash fifty-one subsection C establishes the authorized uses for the Ocean Stewardship Special Fund. The statute allows the monies deposited into the Ocean Stewardship Special Fund to be used to develop and carry out marine resource conservation, restoration, enhancement, research, regulatory measures, enforcement actions, educational activities, or any other management measure intended to conserve, restore, and enhance state marine resources, develop and carry out restoration and compensatory mitigation measures for impacts to the marine environment, including impacts to the marine environment from federal or state permitted actions or aquatic resource violations, and install, maintain, and replace day-use mooring buoys and other infrastructure to reduce impacts to the marine ecosystem. Subsequently, based on feedback during public scoping, DAR plans to use Ocean Stewardship User Fee revenues for a number of projects and programs, including but not limited to habitat restoration, including coral reefs and estuaries, invasive species prevention and removal, water quality research and monitoring, marine debris removal, enhanced monitoring of marine habitat and resources, establishing a statewide program to install, inspect, maintain, and replace day-use mooring buoys, and development of materials and trainings to educate visitors on the cultural, historical, and ecological importance of the various marine resources they interact with, as well as best practices to minimize their impacts. Now that we have provided some background on the Ocean Stewardship User Fee and Ocean Stewardship Special Fund, we will review the draft rules that are the basis of this public hearing. Hawaii Administrative Rules, Chapter thirteen dash seventy-eight, entitled Ocean Stewardship User Fee. Section one is the definition section and includes the pertinent definitions for the chapter. The following definitions are included within this section. Commercial operator means a person that is required to have a commercial operator permit or commercial use permit pursuant to Section thirteen dash two fifty-six dash three Hawaii Administrative Rules. Commercial operator permit means a permit described in Section thirteen dash two fifty-six dash three Hawaii Administrative Rules, now known as commercial use permit. Commercial vessel means a vessel engaged in any trade, business, or commercial activity, including but not limited to carrying passengers for hire, charter fishing, bareboat, or any type of charter maintenance, harvesting coral or similar resources, construction, towing, towboating, or other trade or business wherein the vessel is used in any manner to promote the venture or is registered with the state or documented by the United States Coast Guard for commercial use. Customer means an individual using the services of a commercial use permit holder. Department means the Department of Land and Natural Resources. Passenger means an individual onboard a vessel other than the master, member of the crew, or other persons employed in the business of the vessel. Person means an individual, partnership, firm, company, corporation, association, or other entity. State means the state of Hawaii. Vessel means all description of watercraft used or capable of being used as a means of transportation on or in the water except a seaplane. Section two subsections A through C essentially restate the relevant Ocean Stewardship User Fee requirements set forth in H R S Section one eighty-seven A dash fifty-two. It states that all operators of commercial vessels, watercraft, or water sports equipment that are required to have a commercial operator permit or commercial use permit pursuant to Section thirteen dash two fifty-six dash three shall collect an Ocean Stewardship User Fee from each passenger carried or customer served. The Ocean Stewardship User Fee shall be one dollar per passenger or customer. Fees collected pursuant to this section shall not be counted towards gross revenues for purposes of Section two hundred dash ten subsection C five Hawaii Revised Statutes. And all fees collected pursuant to this section shall be transferred to the department on or before the last day of the month following the month in which the fees were collected. Subsection two E establishes a monthly reporting requirement for commercial operators to report the total number of passengers carried or customers served during the month covered by the report. This information is necessary to calculate the amount of collected user fees that must be transferred to the department. The report will also collect information about the general location of the operator's commercial activity, as well as the nature or type of commercial activity. This information can assist D L N R in deciding how user fee revenues should be allocated. Subsection two F requires commercial operators to maintain records of the daily number of passengers carried or customers served for at least twenty-four months and to make them available for inspection by D L N R upon request. This provides a mechanism for D L N R to conduct audits to ensure compliance with user fee requirements. Section three describes the statutorily authorized penalties that will apply for violations of this chapter. It states that any person violating any provision of this chapter shall be subject to administrative penalties as provided by Section one eighty-seven A dash twelve point five Hawaii Revised Statutes, revocation of a commercial use permit as provided by Section thirteen dash two fifty-six dash ten Hawaii Administrative Rules, and denied reissuance of commercial use permits as provided by Section thirteen dash two thirty-one dash sixty-one Hawaii Administrative Rules. Section three B also states that unless otherwise expressly provided, the remedies or penalties provided by this chapter are cumulative to each other and to the remedies or penalties available under all other laws of the state. Last, Section four is a severability clause, which is a standard inclusion when new administrative rules are proposed.
We have now reached the testimony portion of this hearing. As a reminder, the address to the DAR YouTube channel is at the top of this slide and a link to the livestream has also been pasted into the chat. If you just want to listen into this hearing without providing testimony, you're welcome to log off this Zoom meeting and view the YouTube livestream of this hearing. You'll be called upon by a member, uh, for those that stay in this meeting, you'll be called upon by a member of the DAR staff when it is your turn to testify. We ask that all individuals attending virtually keep their mi- microphones muted when not speaking. And as mentioned earlier, we will take testimony in the following order. First, we'll take in-person testimony from people who have been signed up to testify in Hilo, then in-person testimony in Kona. And once all in-person testimony is gathered, we'll take Zoom testimony. And as a reminder, please keep your testimony to three minutes in order to ensure that everyone who signed up has a chance to give testimony. If there is extra time at the end of everyone on the list and you would like more time to testify, we will allow those who already spoke to give additional testimony. I will now stop sharing my screen so everyone providing testimony can be clearly seen. Okay, we will take any in-person testimony in Hilo. So Troy, go ahead.
Yeah, we have, uh, three people testifying today. Uh, first is Corey Harden.
Hey, please state your name and proceed.
Yeah, um, Corey Harden, good afternoon. Um, thank you for holding this hearing. I'm strong support of the user fee. Um, companies are using coastal resources and making a lot of money doing that and they sometimes cause harm to the environment, damaging coral or boats drift onto reefs or you get fuel or oil contamination and, um, beaches get overcrowded. And for years, D L N R has been saying how short they are of funds. Um, so it can't really fulfill its responsibility to protect our land and water and do upkeep for harbors. D L N R Division of Forestry and Wildlife has almost one million acres to manage and Hawaii hosts about five hundred endangered species, which is one-third of the endangered species in the United States. Um, meanwhile, social media tips are driving tourists to really remote and fragile areas. Um, this, um, there was a bill to collect fifty dollars for a visitor impact fee that survived numerous committees but ended up dying in the last state legislative session. Um, and it was supported by many, um, people, the Hawaii Tourism Authority, the Office of Attorney General, the State Climate Change Commission, and many, many, um, residents. And there are already successful fee collection programs at Haina, Hawaii, and Waiana, Panapa on Maui. Um, fees could pay for informational signs, gates, a consistent presence of enforcement authorities, limitations on usage, and restrooms. Um, you might want more specifics in the rules. You don't want this to turn to a slush fund for special interests. So that's something to think about. Um, also, I think the fee should be higher, ten dollars or more. I mean, you want to be able to at least cover your administrative costs and have something left over. So, um, again, thank you for holding the hearing. I'm in strong support of a robust, um, user fee and perhaps more specifics about how it is used. Thank you.
Hey, thank you very much.
All right, next we have Kimo Kawala here.
Aloha, I'm Kako. Kimo Kawala here. Representing Captain Kimo's Hawaiian Adventures. And I am opposed to the collecting of any more fees. The reason being is I thought that all of the, the, um, the purposes for the fees that we're already paying, which is the slip fees, we also pay the permit fees, we also pay the permission to use, the beach fees. So to add on any more fees and not get anything from all the other fees that we have been, been paying is to me pretty ridiculous. So the reason why I'm opposed for collecting any more fees is because we need, since this is, is already going to be pushed through and the first of the year, we're going to be paying for the ocean stewardship uh, fund. We need to have accountability. And, and we need to have transparency into, to where are all of these monies that we pay in going to? Because we're operating out of Wailla, a small boat harbor. I've sat back for years, the, the bathrooms need, need repair. The whole entire harbor needs to be repaired. So where are all the monies that we've been paying is going? So what I don't really want to see is I don't want to see these funds going into the general funds account. I really want to have them go to where they're supposed to be going, which is the maintaining of our ecosystem and the infrastructure of our harbors. Because right now is doing nothing but polluting our ecosystem. And so this is one of the big reasons why I'm opposed of collecting any more monies. We need transparency and we need accountability. But I do thank you for allowing me to make this statement. And this is the end of my statements. Aloha.
Hey, thank you very much.
All right, uh, and last we have Micah Gauthier.
Good afternoon. My name is Micah Gauthier. I am the founder of a nonprofit Mental Restorations Foundation. And, um, I'm gonna have to side with Captain Kimo here. I'm opposed to this as well and there's a couple of things. Um, I have a personal boat in the harbor and we try to help our veterans, our first responders and family of to utilize the oceans for mental wellness. Um, just, uh, recently, not very long ago, all of our slip fees for using the small boat harbor here went up. But along with going up, the services that we are supposed to be receiving have went down. We no longer have any rubbish cans. We no longer have a bathroom. We no longer have a security light. Um, and it's, yeah, the accountability, you know, you guys raised funds in the past, but we see nothing out of it. The other concern is, is that I do lean heavily on commercial, uh, companies to try to get veterans, first responders, and, um, uh, family of out on the water. Um, occasionally we've chartered boats that handle thirty-six people. Now, we're a nonprofit. Our funds have to stretch as far as they can. And we are trying to do a good service to our community and to our individuals. And adding in more fees and making it a harder burden for our groups to be able to participate isn't, isn't going to be very helpful. Now, it's easier to sell that idea if we seen we're past funds and increases. We're actually going and making a positive impact. But we don't see that here. Uh, so I'm opposed to this as well. Um, I'm, I'm gonna be opposed until we start seeing positive actions with past performances. You know, recently I called D L N R because I, I found a ton of broken balloons down at the harbor. And I he, I hear all this stuff. We're concerned about our environments. We're concerned about this. We're concerned about that. Nobody was down there to pick them up. Nobody, you know, you guys have removed the rubbish can, so all the rubbish is just going right into the river. It's up to individuals to go out and do the cleaning and to do, and to do the maintenance. And, you know, let alone even on the dock, any kind of safety precaution to protect the boats has been removed. And they claim, you know, you can't use tires because of the environment. But when they hired the tire company that dropped them in the, in the water, they just let them stay. So I don't buy the, the environmental, um, justification fee as well. So I'd like to see action before we commit to this. And we'd like to see where the monies do get spent. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any other in-person testifiers in Hilo?
That's it for us. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, next, we'll take any in-person testimony in Kona. Chris, I'll hand it over to you.
Okay, first up we'll have, uh, Steve Kaiser.
Hello, my name is Steve Kaiser. I live in Javi in O'Kohala. I typically fish out of, um, Kauai High South. And, uh, I'm all for this bill, but I'd like to see one little change. I think all the vessels that are commercial who are using the ocean need to be labeled. I mean, my boat has a BF on it for bottom fishing, so DoCare can identify what kind of fishing I'm doing and whether I'm registered or not. I'd like to see all the boats that are commercial on the ocean also have at least some designation on the side of both sides of their vessel so we know who they are. Lately, we've been seeing an increase in commercial operations in, uh, Kauai High. Um, it's exceeding the number of, of commercial ramp permits that we have. So I, I don't know what's going on, but it would be nice to at least identify those people who are paying. And just to make it clear, it's not the businesses that are paying, it's the, it's the customers. I don't think any tourist that comes out and enjoys our beautiful waters here would have any problem just putting a dollar in to help maintain it and everything. So let's not make it a business issue. Let's make it a on-o-ha issue and, you know, we're taking care of our ocean. So let's not make it a business issue. Let's make it a, an Ohio issue. And, you know, we're taking care of our ocean. And these people are coming here and using it, our beautiful waters. I don't think they have any problem paying just a dollar. Thank you.
Hey, thank you very much.
Great, next up we have Mike Nakachi.
Aloha, Mike Akko, everyone. My name's Mike Nakachi. I, I guess I, I would like to comment instead of going for or against this policy. I'm all for stewardship fee and, and I really want to see. The Division of Aquatic Resources be successful and have funding. But the way that I, I, I see this kind of rolling out, there is really no nuts and bolts to it. The reason is, is that you're, you're going off of commercial permit fees. I'll give you an example. Twenty-five years ago, I went to the Galapagos. I paid a hundred dollars. Nineteen years ago, I went to the Galapagos. I paid a hundred dollars. Five years ago, I went to the Galapagos. I paid a hundred dollars. Everyone that comes off the plane pays a hundred dollars when you go into the Galapagos in the park. I, I find for many of us that have Maokua Alhau. And have lineage to this place are seeing. Exploitation at its finest when it comes to commercial impacts on resources. So I, I think a dollar is, is manini, and, and I think that. DOR Bor has unveiled something to the Department of Aquatic Resources. I think that DoCare also needs to be looped in, and there really needs to be, as the two gentlemen in Hilo. Also pointed out is that we, we need some kind of standardized structure. Even though you have grocery receipt forms and they have something new with a passenger count. You, you, you need those people that are commercial permit holders to then. Have the funds go to the appropriate places. As the other lady in Hilo also pointed out, ten dollars, I think that the fees need to be much higher. Our resources aren't getting better. I think it's quite admirable what you're trying to do. But there's no structure to how the funds would be really used. So that's, that's my real concern. So I think until you get to that point, you really can't. People really can't give you an honest opinion, whether they're for it or against it, because there's no structure to it right now. It's just a dollar. We have whatever. Fifteen million tourists that come to Hawaii that rakes a fifteen million dollar slush fund potentially for a person that jumps on a boat. I just honestly need to see something a lot more organized. And, and the fees to me would need to be higher, because. I don't want to pay to degrade, and I don't want to incentivize commercial operators to then. Be held in higher regard because they take twenty thousand people a year versus someone that takes twenty and has the highest end quality. So those are my concerns that I think you need to have a lot more structure in place before you do a policy like this. Moving forward, especially by the beginning of the year. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much.
And that's all who have signed up for the West Hawaii in person.
Okay, just one last call before we move to the Zoom in East Hawaii. Any in-person testimony that has not been given?
Uh, no more testifiers from us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll take Zoom testimony. If you have registered for this Zoom hearing. We will presume you're interested in providing testimony and we'll call your name in the order you have signed up. If you do not wish to provide oral testimony, you can indicate so when we call your name or let us know through the chat feature. Okay, first up for Zoom testimony, we have Greg Asner. Next, Karen Ono. Next, Aaron Gross. Uh, next, Sharon Morays. Sharon, would you like to testify?
Yes, I do.
All right, please go ahead.
Aloha, Sharon Morays from East Hawaii. I, you know, I cannot say whether I oppose or. Support this simply because as a gentleman before us stated, there's no structure. I am also worried about the transparency and accountability. And there's, there's, I'm, I'm sorry. There is no paper trails as well. You know, you need to go back and look at everything, because what you, what the legislature and what the rules say sounds wonderful. All these monies would be wonderful to. Malama, our Kai, everything that's in the Kai, outside of the Kai, but where is the monies going now? You collect all these fees and I look at them as taxes. I look at them as taxes, and because I look at them as taxes, unfortunately. There's no improvement. There are really no visibility of. Enforcement officers. There is a lack, I understand, a lack of people, and you are recruiting and you are training. But where are they? Our island especially is the lightest island, and there is so much resources here. Where and what could you folks do? But again. I see the monies being raised and going into the general fund, honestly, and not doing what. They are supposed to use it for. So at this point, I, I will not support or. Oppose until I get more information. And, you know, I want you to know that what I learn. I pass on to our Mo'opuna. Because they are coming up and they are learning all about conservation, preserving our culture, all of that. They know that when you take someone to the Kai and they don't follow the rules, you don't come back with us. You do not come back with our family. So what are you going to use the money for? That's what I want to know. Mahalo, mahalo.
Hey, mahalo. Next up is Rob Colbertson. Next, Kristen Ophriel. Next, David Hill. Next, Rosalie Luehl. Sue Aronson. Ray Grillit. Victor Lozano.
Uh, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Can I ask three questions before I do any testimony?
This is, there's no opportunity for answering questions at this time. It's.
Okay, so I'll just, I'll just go ahead and state them as, as my testimony. One is, is, one of the things I'm concerned is the sunset law. This fund, the dollar collection, eventually goes to a sunset. And it goes into a general fund. This is what we were told last. I don't see it in the, in the rules in the bill. But that's what we were told. Two, the dollar, and I mentioned this before, who collects the taxes on the dollar? Uh, does the business, is the business responsible for the state tax, the Fed tax, the IRS, and the credit card fees? Is this dollar just, it gets whittled down a little bit, this dollar, or do I have to give the dollar and still pay all the taxes on it as a commercial operator? And then who provides the report? Will you provide the report? These are three questions I have. There's also in the verbiage. About invasive species. The University of Hawaii, I love the University of Hawaii, but they brought in a number of invasive species, and now we're responsible for cleaning up. I'm not opposed to the dollar. Don't get me wrong. But there's got to be some cleanup. Everyone here is stating the same thing. It's got to be cleaned up. And it's got to be able, I would love to have the aquatics have that dollar for the duration of the time that they collect the dollar. But we have to clean up a couple of these things, you know. The guys who, who are carrying harvesting coral. They're getting charged a dollar for a customer. They're not carrying customers. Construction guys, they're not carrying customers. But you're putting it in there towing. You're basically targeting commercial tour operators. A vast majority of tour operators really care about what they do and, and the resources that they have. Without those resources. We don't have anything to show people. Transparency is big. This is something that has to happen. I think everyone's voicing that same opinion. The department has to have transparency. How's this money going to be used? Where's the money going to be used? And who's paying the taxes on this money? That's all I have right now.
Hey, thank you very much. Next up is Damian Kennison. Next, Glenn Metzler. Next, Charles Young. Uh, next Diane Ware. Diane, would you like to provide testimony?
Um, no, I'm not prepared. I don't know how I'm down there, but I'm not prepared right now.
Okay, no, that's fine. We'll move on. Janice Palmer Glenni. Uh, Madison Kirsty. Carrie Millen.
Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. I am an attorney. I represent a large number of commercial operators. I, I represent a large number of commercial operators on Maui, Big Island, and Kauai. And I think the issue is simply that the structure that needs to be in place for this is not in place. As presented, I'm against this. The commercial operators that I represent care very much about the resource. And they have every interest in protecting it at an appropriate level because there's, there are needs for making a living. So they already pay a tremendous amount in taxes and grocery receipts. And what they're being asked to do is essentially pass on another fee to the customer. Which raises the ticket price and which frankly, many of them are going to just absorb. Because there already is a ticket price that sort of meets the max density. And so I think it's, it's pushing on to them an obligation that shouldn't be on them. And I don't think the structure is in place to appropriately manage the dollars that come in the door. There is nobody that has testified today that the harbors are in great condition. Or that day mornings are in fabulous condition, that there are appropriate levels of enforcement. And everybody is wanting that to occur. So until the dollars that are contributed to the state of Hawaii by these commercial operators are managed appropriately. And put back into the very resource that they're coming from. It's not appropriate to continue to collect more dollars and not utilize them in a way that is, is directly giving back in a meaningful way. Having stated goals doesn't mean the dollars are going to go where they need to go. So I would encourage the department to look at this, develop a much, much better structure. And frankly, to take a step back on the grocery receipts and figure out how to properly get the grocery receipts where they need to be. Because I think the end result was there's a tremendous amount of dollars available. For you guys to manage the resource for DOR Bor and DAR to do what they need to do. And I think all of the commercial operators would welcome that.
Hey, thank you for your testimony. Next is Pam Madden. Next, Holly Crane. Holly, would you like to provide testimony?
So we submitted a written testimony. The, the one thing I would like to. Reinforce with the written testimony is. You know, we would request that a website be created because the public. Is paying these fees, our passengers, our guests, visitors, locals, anyone who goes out on a commercial tour. It should be public information. There's, it, it would be a great way to raise awareness. It would hold, you know, have accountability of where these monies are going. You know, ideally, we would urge the department to have those monies go back to each island where they're generated. At the very least, the Hawaiian waters. But if there were a website that counted for those monies, here's what we've done, here's what we've maintained, here's what we've cleaned up. It would raise awareness on all levels, and I think everyone would feel really good about it. I mean, I know everyone has concerns about accountability. We support conservation. On every level, on the protection of our resources for, for obviously many, many reasons, but having a website. And, and having that accountability would be something we would urge the department to, to consider. And that way, it's all public information. Everyone can see where everything is, because it is. It's about protecting our ocean. So. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony.
Hey, mahalo. Next, we have Mendy Dent. Jen C. Would you like to provide testimony? Hey, I see Jen on, but we can come back. Next is Manuel Huloloia.
I have no comments at this time, Mr. Sogoro. Thank you, sir.
Okay, mahalo. Next up, Uilani Naipol.
Hui aloha, mahalo nui, David. I'm Uilani Naipol, Meloli CBSFA Program Administrator. Representing as linear descendant of the place. I think my comments. I would like to reiterate and, and share sentiments that were shared prior regarding not having a good insight as to. How the funds are used for, but in the general sense, I, I totally support a user fee program. We have shared in public resources that, that we all manage, and I say we, not only DLNR is responsible, but. As a state-recognized co-manager of a CBSFA, we don't have regular funding. So a, a nonprofit organization like ourselves, we would like to see and make sure that we have access to some of those funds. I think a lot of concerns that were just raised prior have to do with infrastructure and maybe out of scope. But regardless, I think their, their concerns should be addressed, and everybody should have insight to that. Of what is falling within this user fee program and what is not. I, I really think that. DLNR as well as grassroots and community-based efforts and stewards of the place. Both are underfunded tremendously and in stewarding the public trust of natural resources. And I think such a fee is late coming and it's, it's a bit low in my opinion. But I do strongly support such a program being established. Mahalo nui.
Mahalo. And next up is Wayne Tanaka.
Hello?
Hey Wayne, go ahead.
Hey David, um, sorry, I wasn't actually gonna testify, but did want to, I guess, raise a few comments. First, I think to clarify Carrie's. Point or testimony, you know, this, this measure and, and this proposal is, it's to protect the resource, right? It's to protect the. Actual resource that is bringing in revenues for your clients and, and, and not necessarily to maintain infrastructure like these morning boys. You know, those things fall under DOR Bor. And, and, and you know, DOR Bor has the responsibility and prerogative to, to take care of those. Um, and, 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 you know, DOR has the responsibility and prerogative to, to take care of those things. And if, um, you know, if, if they're not fulfilling their. Then, you know, I think that's something you should take up with them rather than oppose, uh. More resource and revenue generation to protect, um, you know, the, the foundational. You know, the foundation of, of your folks, like, um, industry, I guess. Um, uh, I did, I did also want to note that, you know, this is about rulemaking and so there's a distinction between rules that. You know, are, um. You know, essentially, uh, statements of policy, um, or law that affect the rights of or procedures available to the public. Um, versus like, you know, uh, issues like administrative structures, internal management of an agency. Um, and so, uh, you know, I agree, definitely should have an internal structure for DAR to track and monitor these funds. But I'm not sure if that's, uh, something that needs to go through rulemaking. Um, versus something that can be, you know, instituted and, and hopefully in a transparent way, um, for the public. But I, I don't know if that needs to, you know, go through a whole chapter nine one process. Um, and then I, I didn't want to know, you know, I think. You know, folks have mentioned how the funds, like one to three million dollars, uh, would, you know, in itself be a, a huge part of. DAR's budget, uh, to protect our, you know, our coral reef or natural environment, which we all know are under unprecedented strain. Um, from everything from climate change to land uses, population increases, um. But, um, they, those funds could also be leveraged against other sources of revenues like federal grants and, and private, private funds. Um, but what you really would amplify the impact of these funds would be to use them. To, uh, uplift and facilitate the efforts of communities, uh, like Miluli. Um, who are dedicating thousands and thousands of hours of volunteer effort and. You know, generations of knowledge, uh, to ensure the perpetuation of their initial resources and doing it successfully. You know, in the few places that have been able to, to, um, co-part, co-manage with the state. Um, so we'll be sending, uh, written comments as well. I just wanted to, to point out those three things. Thank you.
Okay, mahalo. I'm gonna go back. Uh, Pam Madden, did you want to provide testimony? Okay, if not, is there anyone else on the Zoom hearing that has not had an opportunity to provide testimony that wishes to do so now? If so, uh, please go ahead and unmute yourself and identify yourself. Okay, seeing none. Is there anyone who has testified that wishes to provide additional testimony? Okay. Well, persons unable.
I'm sorry, David.
Go ahead.
Just one more thing, Victor, Victor Lozano again.
Yeah, please go ahead.
So why not? I just want to make sure that people understand that. You know, the gross receipts that we pay as a commercial operator. What that means, we have a base rate we pay for the slip, for our privilege to be able to use. A state facility to pick up our customers and take them out. But then we pay. Three percent of our gross, whichever, the, the, the base or, or the three percent, whichever is higher. The three percent is always higher, it's higher. So there's a lot of money going out and. The management of that gross receipts is not ma- being managed properly because it's going to a general fund. I just need people to make sure they understand, there is a lot of money being collected by commercial operators, by the state, from the commercial operators.
Okay, thank you. All right, anyone else wishing to provide testimony? Either on Zoom or at the in-person sites? Last call. All right. Persons unable to attend today or wishing to present additional comments. May mail written testimony to us by August fourth, twenty twenty-three. Please mail testimonies to the Department of Land and Natural Resources, Division of Aquatic Resources. Eleven fifty-one Punch Bowl Street, room three thirty, Honolulu, Hawaii nine six eight one three. That address is at the bottom of this slide. Written testimony may also be submitted by email to dlnr.aquatics@hawaii.gov. This is the projected timeline for these rules after this public hearing. The dates are estimates, assuming that no significant changes to the proposal need to be made based on the testimony received. Based on the testimonies presented, the department will submit its findings and recommendations to the Board of Land and Natural Resources. If approved by the board, the Department of the Attorney General will conduct the final legal review. If approved, the proposed rules will be given to the governor for his final approval. Should the governor grant approval, certified copies will be filed with the Lieutenant Governor's Office. And after ten days, it becomes effective as law. Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, let me share this screen. Okay, um, I'm gonna go back a slide. In case anyone wants to write down the DAR email address. Or the, uh, mailing address if you want to submit written testimony. It's eleven fifty-one Punch Bowl Street, room three thirty, Honolulu, Hawaii nine six eight one three. And email dlnr.aquatics@hawaii.gov. And again, this is the projected timeline for these rules after the public hearing. So based on the testimonies presented, the department will submit its findings and recommendations. To the Board of Land and Natural Resources. If approved by the board, the Department of the Attorney General will conduct the final legal review. And if approved, the proposed rules will be given to the governor for final approval. And should the governor grant approval, certified copies will be filed with the Lieutenant Governor's Office. And then after ten days becomes law. Are there any questions regarding this process? Hey, well, on behalf of the Board of Land and Natural Resources and DAR. Thank you for attending this public hearing. It is now six twenty-seven PM and this public hearing is now adjourned. Thank you for taking time out of your day to participate in this public hearing.